Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call. We're just grateful tonight to introduce those of you who are with us tonight. We have a lot of students present tonight. We're grateful to have you with us. We're gonna have, we have the Cholo High School Student Body and different members of Student Council that will be shadowing the council tonight. And so I'm gonna turn the time, this meeting right now, to Acting Mayor tonight, Connor Anderson, okay? And Connor's gonna go ahead and go, start going through the meeting here for us, okay?
Okay, so we're gonna start with the roll call. I'm Connor Anderson. I'm Student Body President.
I'm Emma Herrera, Student Body Treasurer.
State who you're representing.
I'm representing Vice Mayor Brent Hatch.
I'm Elena Hackey. I'm, and I'm the Student Body Vice President, and I'm representing Councilman Lees.
I'm Braden Hill. I'm the Senior Class Treasurer, representing Councilwoman Kikavis.
I'm Akira Cassin, and I'm Student Body Communications Director, and I'm representing Councilman Mike Alsop.
I'm Hannah Lewis. I'm Senior Class Secretary, and I'm representing Councilman Jean Kelly.
I'm Emma Walters. I'm Senior Class President, and I'm representing Councilman Rennie Crittenden.
Okay, all council members are present, so we're gonna turn the time over to Councilman Alsop for the invocation, and then that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Showbiz Choir. Please stand for those who would like to join with us.
For heaven and father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for the day, the privilege to vote and to make decisions for this United States and this state, and even down to the local government. We just ask that you be with each one of these kids tonight, as they see what government's about and to play a role in it tonight, if it's a decision that they would like to make. But just give them an opportunity to see what it's all about. And we just ask that you, plus each one of these kids here tonight in Showbiz, and also the council kids, and we just ask that you be with each one of the people that's overseas defending our country tonight, and we just ask you bring them home safely. And just ask you to do us the love and the grace and the mercy that only you have, asking your precious name.
Amen. Thank you. We really appreciate that, you being here and sharing that rendition tonight. It's great.
Okay, the first item that we have is the Call to Public. Any citizen desiring to speak on the matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments, comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed by the City Council as a whole and not by any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Per sonnet to the Arizona Opening Open Meeting Law, the City Council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the Call to Public, individual City Council members may: 1. Respond to criticism made by those who have spoken; 2. Ask staff to review the matter; and 3. Ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. We have one call to the public today, and it is by Brian Herrera.
Good evening. My name is Bryant William Herrera. I'm the Area Specialist of the United States Department of Agriculture. And basically, I managed our housing program for some of their programs for Navajo and Apache Counties. And I thank you in allowing me to just do a shameless plug this evening. My daughter is Emma Herrera, and she asked me to accompany her this evening, and I said, "Okay", but Dad's gonna try to count it as an outreach event for his office. So, I just wanted to state that we have some foreclosure sales going on. The USDA is foreclosing and selling some properties in Apache and Navajo Countings coming up on the 13th and the 14th of this month. And please feel free to visit our website, or you can contact my office. I'm right here on Deduce. My office number is 928-532-2270. And also to let the public know that we are still doing our grant program, our 504 program, and we're doing our purchase loans of 502. We've gotten a slew of money this year. We did not spend all our money in the state of Arizona last year. A lot of that had to do with the housing prices going up and us not being able to approve people for enough money yet. But we have received a lot of funding for this new fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other calls to the public? Nobody move, so we'll close the call to the public. Next, we'll move to Special Events. We have a presentation by Cholo High School Showbiz Choir.
And you're back.
While the kids are coming up, we would just like to announce the 34th Annual Cholo High School Feast of Carols. This tradition began 34 years ago here in Cholo, under the direction of Mr. Scott Gentry. And so this year, these students will be taking the stage once again as the Royal Court and entertaining audiences. So we would like to invite everyone in the city of Cholo and the surrounding communities to come and join us for a remarkable Christmas production that kind of starts the festivities off, for at least me, and I know for the kids, it doesn't feel like Christmas without Feast of Carols. So the dates this year for Feast of Carols are November 29th and 30th, and December 1st. The shows will be at 7:00 PM on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, with an additional matinee on Saturday at noon. The Thursday night show is the dessert night, and the tickets are $8. Friday and Saturday night are the full six-course feasts, and it is $20 for those tickets. And then the matinee on Saturday is a soup, salad, and dessert show for $15. Tickets will go on sale next Tuesday, November 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Loft Green Photography. So they'll sell through that following week, up until the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And then if you still need to get tickets the week of the show, they do go up in price a little bit. But there hopefully will be some available for you if you don't hurry and get them. But do get your tickets, because they go quickly. Last year, we were sold out within five days. So we actually had to add a show. So that's why we've kept all four shows this year. So we would just like to invite everybody to come and join us for the magnificent celebration. And before we leave tonight, the kids would like to share one of our songs with you. This is "I Heard the Bells on Christmas Day".
(Singing) I heard the bells on Christmas Day, carols of billiard carols play. And wild and sweet the words repeat, a peace on earth, goodwill to men. I thought how as the day had come, the bells ring of old Christian dawn. And rolled along the broken song, a peace on earth, goodwill to men. And in despair I bowed my head, there is no peace on earth, I said. For ages strong amongst the sun, a peace on earth, goodwill to men. Then pealed the bells more loud and deep, God is not dead nor does he sleep. The wrong shall fail, the right prevail, with peace on earth, goodwill to men. Till reading see it on its way, the world revolved from night to day. A voice that shined a chance of light, a peace on earth, goodwill to men. With peace on earth, goodwill to men.
Thank you, Showbiz Choir. We will now be turning the time over to Mayor Seymour for a special presentation.
Thank you. On behalf of the Cholo City Council and also the employees of the city of Cholo, tonight's kind of a special night. Mr. Mooter has been with us for over 30 years. And so the International City, County, and Management Association, in honor of 30 years of service to local government, to Edward Mooter, is recognized for significant contributions and achievements in the advancement of local government administration. This was presented at the 104th Annual Conference in Baltimore, Maryland in September. Ed's kind of a proud guy, and nobody knows about it unless we, you know, kind of show it off here. And so we'd like to present this to Ed tonight.
Thank you.
Move on with the meeting.
We appreciate his family being here tonight, too. We know that you have sacrificed a lot and given him up many hours of, in the evening and late-night meetings and things. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Okay, so our next presentation will be regarding the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference by Cholo's Youth Delegation. Elena Hackey, Emma Walters, Bo Williams, and Laura Ellsworth will be presenting that.
All right, my name is Emma Walters. This is Elena Hackey, and this is Bo Williams. Laura Ellsworth couldn't be with us tonight, because she is trying out for basketball, I believe. So that's important. That's where she's at. But we had the opportunity to go to the League of Nations, which is an event held by, kind of, all the cities in Arizona. And they all gather together and meet, and I don't know what they do, because we do something different. But a lot of different little student governments go and represent their towns. And so this year, us three, four, got to go and experience that. So these are just some of the things we learned while we were there. Other one, maybe? Yeah, we got to carry the flag. They do a march of flags, so we all line up. And they gave Elena the honor of carrying the flag down and around for the city of Cholo, and we followed.
Okay, so the first thing that, or the first people who talked to us was Radar. That's their, that's their app. It was two professional basketball players, and they kind of travel around the country and teach people about how to stand up for bullies, or stand up for people who are being bullied. So they first taught us about how to set goals on how we're going to protect ourselves and others who may be affected by bullies. Attendance and grades affect our school performance. He kind of like mentioned about how, how like being involved in extracurricular activities can affect us and help us. And then being all-in, which is kind of something that we talk about at our school. It's just kind of going along with the last part, where you have to put all of your, like, just do the best that you can to make your time at high school be good. Being a leader, you have to help others, not hurt them. And like, they taught us not to support bullies, and like, even if you're just laughing or not doing anything about it, you're pretty much supporting them. So they also talked about how words are powerful, so we have to be careful with that. There's power in numbers, so you can, if you see someone being bullied, you can like help by just saying something, because then most likely, other people would go along with you. We also have to respect everyone. Yeah, that's all.
So the next workshop we went to was about advocacy, the public support or recommendation, or, yeah, recommendation of a particular cause. So what this guy taught us was, it was almost about knowing people. So he was, I think he mentioned he was like a minority, like, in the town he grew up in, or whatever. And so he like, he made it a point to go to his city government, like, every meeting, and like, ask and talk to them about issues that he wanted to see changed. And so he talked about that, and then finally, like, he started seeing things improve and everything. And so he was kind of teaching us how we need to go out and talk about what we want seen in our community and work our way up to achieve that.
All right, so this next slide talks about "We Are the Future". So going back to what Elena talked about, the two basketball players, and what they taught us. So anti-bullying, we can stop bullying now. So basically, what they talked to us about was, they put on this skit, and in this skit, this kid wakes up for school, and at home, everything's not going too great for him. When he gets to school, people aren't the greatest to him either. And so we can stop bullying now by treating others with respect. Not seeing them through everybody else's eyes, but improving our vision towards them. And that's, that's basically it. Yeah.
Yeah, so we thank you. So you guys funded the trip for us to go. You paid for our hotel and our food and everything, and we just want to thank you for the experience, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our, our next presentation will be for the Snow Management Plan, and that will be by Rick Austin and Ryan Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and guests. Staff would like to take this opportunity to present the 2018-2019 Snow Plan. Here to help me with this presentation is Ryan Hall, the Street Supervisor. During a snow event, the city is split into 14 routes that 28 plow operators are responsible for. The main pieces of equipment include four 10-wheeled trucks, two six-wheeled trucks, three loaders and plows, and several pickups for cul-de-sacs and smaller rideaways. If you look at the map that we have up right now, Ryan here will explain how we go about covering the city in the event.
All right, so on our routes, that's not the order of which the streets get plowed in, the 1, 2, 3. That's just our assignments for each equipment. So routes 1 through 4, those are cinder trucks. They take care of the main collector roads. 5 and 6 are our six-wheel dump trucks. They have some collector roads, but they mainly take care of the subdivisions with the big hills and stuff in them. And then 8 through 12 are just regular subdivisions. 13 is our de-icer. That also has some subdivisions, along with some designated spots where we lay down the de-icer. And then our 14th, that, that route is just to help out where needed. Sometimes we run into problems, plows getting stuck, we fall behind. That's what we utilize Route 14 for. So helps with the, like, country club where there's lots of cul-de-sacs. It just helps us keep on top of things.
During a snow event, Ryan or I will assess the need for the equip, for any equipment that maybe need to be deployed for snow removal or de-icing operations to commence. Snow removals are classified into four levels. Level 1 is reserved for half-inch to 2 inches of snow. When the snow starts to fly, Ryan, the Police Department, or myself, will start monitoring the streets for any slick areas that may need treatment, such as cinders or a mix of de-icer and cinders that were approved by council early on. Level 2 is reserved for 2 to 3 inches of snowfall. At this point, Public Works is making, making sure all the school bus routes, collector streets, transit routes, and city-owned parking lots remain open by a combination of light plowing and cinder spreading. Other Public Works staff at this point are being put on standby for a full call-out. What we do is we watch the maps. We assess what's gonna happen and see how much snow we got coming in. And we may send the second shift, or B-shift, as we call it, home to take a nap, because we're getting ready to go out on a full call-out. Other things is we assess the streets and just, you know, just make sure that everything is safe. Level 3 is reserved for 3 or more inches of snow, and triggers a full call-out in two 12-hour shifts. And that's the reason why we send them home to sleep, because we're gonna be plowing till the snow is gone. Supervised by Ryan Hall as the A-shift Coordinator and Matt B-shift Coordinator, Public Works is split into the two shifts, and snow operations continue until all streets are open and passable to traffic. After the snowfall has ceased, streets will be widened. Public Works follows the predetermined sidewalk list that is in the plan, which includes the city hall parking and the entire downtown area. Level 4 is reserved for a severe event that triggers a haul-off of snow that impedes traffic and rescue services to be designated, to designated dump sites. We have areas in town that we can take the snow and dump it. You know, we'll start hauling at that time. The last function, function of the snow plan is removing snow berm's for the elderly and disabled citizens of the city. The city will return to approved locations for snow berm removal when a resident has successfully submitted a snow berm removal form with a doctor's statement that the applicant is physically unable to perform the act of shoveling snow. A snow berm removal form is available upon request at City of Cholo City Hall, or calling the Public Works Department at 928-532-4100, or by downloading the form online at www.choloz.gov. During a snow event, the airport will be conducting, conducting breaking action tests on the runway with a Beaumont AFM2 deceller meter or equivalent to determine that what action needs to be taken, what action needs to be, to take place to keep the airport functional. As a city, as the need arises, additional resources and manpower may be rotated to assist in the snow removal process at the airport. Staff has created a policy regarding mailbox damage due to snow plow operations. Staff recognizes that the post office regularly has the resident put their mailbox in the city's right-of-way, or will not deliver mail to them. The policy allows the resident to put up a mailbox in the right-of-way with the proper permitting process, and gives direction as to what he can install, what can be installed by the citizen. If damage is reported, the resident has the option to make a claim to the city, have the city replace the mailbox, or fix it themselves, and submit a receipt to the city. Before a claim is paid, a city representative, like myself, will verify if the damage is indeed due to plow operations, and not for other reasons like rotten posts or pre-existing conditions that will be documented by the Public Works Department during pre-snow operation inspections. If it is deemed that the city is responsible for the damage, reimburse, reimbursement of up to $100, or the value of the box can be obtained by the citizen. Public Works will photograph any damages and keep a log, which will include the date, address, type of damage repaired, cost of material, time, and labor for each repair. Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
You didn't make any comment about on-street parking. Can you say something about that a little bit?
Yeah, there is a policy. If cars are parked in the subdivisions, and they're parked along the side of the road, and not in the driveways, we will not plow it until they're removed. We'll have PD come and take care of it. It's just a, it's a hassle for us, and there's a lot of liability that could happen. We could easily take out the cars, so.
So Ryan, is that a chance that could get towed? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
There is, but we take every step to not let that happen. I, myself, knock on doors. We get a list, and we go out and talk to the citizens first, before we have to do something drastic.
Everybody recognize we've got a storm coming, and that's not a problem. Was it much last year? Did we have snow?
We didn't have much snow.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So we're, we will move to our next item, which is the Consent Calendar. Our first item on the Consent Calendar is consideration of minutes of Cholo City Council meetings. The first one is Joint Study Session of October 16, 2018, and the second is Regular Meeting of October 16, 2018. I would like to look for a motion.
Go, go, go!
For Councilwoman Kikavis, I move to approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I am seconding, seconding the motion for Brent Hatch.
Okay, is there any discussion? No? Okay. We will now call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Passed 7 to 0. Our next item is the New Business. This is a consideration of award of construction contract for East McNeil Waterline Replacement, City of Cholo Project Number W0119. Oh, and now we're gonna turn the time over to Shane.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, students. Good to see you. I don't know about you guys, I'm ready for some snow. I'm ready for. All right, moving on to my item, the City's Physical Year 2019 Capital Improvements Program Budget includes $300,000 for a waterline improvement project labeled McNeil Fifth Place to Dusa Clubs. This project consists of replacing approximately 2,100 linear feet of aging and deteriorating 6-inch AC waterline with an 8-inch PVC water main, installing new surfaces and fire hydrants. Any concrete or asphalt removed during the project will be replaced. The proposed improvements are located in East McNeil from Fifth Place to the Dusa Clubs. The project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $276,000. Approvals from ADQ, which is the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, to construct have been obtained. The project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Rock Country Builders Incorporated with a bid of $243,752.50. Rollin Specialty Contracting at two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, Western Grade LLC, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars, Mountain High Excavating at three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, and Now Patch Equipment Services at three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the East McNeil Waterline Replacement, City of Cholo Project number W zero-one-one-nine to Rock Country Builders in amount not to exceed the two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. There's a bid tabulation of the items that are being bid attached, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Probably the same question I asked you before. They done work for us before that company?
Rock Country, yes, they have. They've done prior projects a couple of years back and actually they're the contractor currently doing the sewer line improvements for the Sierra Vista subdivision behind Horn near Eighth Street, Reedhead, Stratton, in that area. He's going to, speaking with the contractor, he's going to move to this project once that one is completed.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, so we will look for a motion.
For Councilmember Leach, I move to award the construction contract for the East McNeil Waterline Replacement, City of Cholo Project number W dash zero-one-one-nine to Rock Country Builders in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, is there a second?
I would like to second the motion for Councilman Mike Alsop.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? It passes seven to zero. Our next item will be consideration of award of contract to Nicholas Homestead Park Field and Lighting. Yeah, and we will give the floor to Mr.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and guests. I'm not used to this because I always go last, so this is a new experience for me here. The approved fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget includes three hundred thousand dollars for installing field lights for the two Little League fields at Nicholas Homestead Park. The work includes furnishing and installing seven LED light poles, wire, electrical panels, and controls. Last year's budget included project to install underground conduit for future field lighting, which will accommodate this project. Staff selected Musco Sports Lightings LLC, a vendor with the National Joint Powers Alliance, now called Sourcewell, to complete the lighting project through cooperating, cooperative purchasing contract number Staff recommends awarding the contract to Musco Sports Lighting LLC for installing field lighting at Nicholas Homestead Park in amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Councilmember Alsop.
It's not a question, but it's a comment. I want to thank staff and everybody in the council for bringing this on. This would be a great asset for the Little League and softball throughout the whole city and also tournaments for the summertime. We can bring in a lot of money into the city, so. Just want to thank everybody for putting this together. You know, now we can utilize those fields three or four times a night instead of one time a night. I do want to thank.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other discussion?
Can we play softball on those or no?
Well, they're Little League regulations, so I don't know what the softball rules are in relation to what the dimensions would be for softball, so.
Have we ever or no?
I don't know, have we? It sounds like we have.
I would just like to observe for the public to know this project has been in planning for a good while. And in fact, as I understand it, the conduit for running all the electrical wiring and all has already been installed in a previous budget. So these things aren't cheap to do. And I still stay in shock every time I look at numbers that have to do with government because I just can't quite get used to how big they are. But, so we sometimes do things in stages. But I have heard people make comment that we do nothing for the youth of this community. Well, that's simply not true as a council. And we are blessed to have the finances available that many cities don't have. And so we're able to do this and happy to do it. And I just want you to understand it. This is not all that this costs. I don't remember the cost for installing all of the conduit, but this is the final finishing touches and going to light the fields up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there, is there any other discussion? No? We will look for a motion, Akira.
For Councilmember Mike Alsop, I move to award a contract to Musco Sports Lighting LLC for installing field lighting at Nicholas Homestead Park in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'm seconding the motion for Councilmember Crittenen.
Is there any other discussion? No, we'll move it to a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, and it passes seven to zero. Our next item is consideration of resolution number R two-zero-one-eight-two-six, resciting resolution number R two-zero, rescinding resolution number R two-zero-one-six-oh-four and adopting fees for library services.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and students. I'm happy to be here tonight. In February two thousand and sixteen, the city council approved resolution number R two-zero-one-six-dash-zero-four to adopt fees for Cholo Public Library Services. The fees covered membership, overdue materials, damaged or lost library materials, interlibrary loans and holds, fax missing use, printing or copying, and renting the library's community room. Overdue fees for library materials, books, magazines, music, audiobooks, children's items, movies, equipment, board and video games, and electronic devices range from ten cents to a dollar per item per day, depending on the material, or a five-dollar maximum per item. Deposits show that typically the total amount collected annually for overdue fees is less than one percent or on average, less than a hundred and fifty dollars annually of all library fees. Staff finds that patrons are eager to use the library's resources and readily comply with the borrowing time limits. To promote greater goodwill, encourage literacy, and support learning opportunities, library staff is requesting eliminating all overdue fines. This change in practice would follow a growing national trend. There are hundreds of libraries across the United States that have eliminated all overdue fees, some for the last ten years. They all report an increase in circulation and a higher return rate of materials. Cholo's library personnel also believe that eliminating overdue fees will remove any barriers to library access, especially for low-income families. This revision will not eliminate the fee for lost library materials, which are items that are kept longer than a hundred and twenty days. A delinquent account holder who has kept an item beyond a hundred and twenty days is sent to collections. Of the fourteen thousand items checked out per month at Cholo Public Library, only six to seven accounts are sent to collections. A very low rate that shows that the majority of patrons return items promptly. The council is being asked to approve resolution number R two-zero-one-eight-dash-two-six, rescinding resolution number R two-zero-one-six-dash-zero-four, and adopting fees for services provided by Cholo Public Library. The only change eliminates fees for overdue materials. All other fees remain the same. I'm open for questions.
Okay, is, are there any questions?
Want to say thank you for what you do at the library. It's very well-used and I think a lot of these youth learned quite a bit about the library today. It's very, very helpful.
Okay, we'd like to move for a motion.
For Vice Mayor Hatch, I move to approve resolution R twenty-eighteen-twenty-six, rescinding resolution number R twenty-sixteen-oh-four and adopting fees for services provided by Cholo Public Library.
Is there a second?
I am seconding motion for Councilmember Kelly.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, and it is proper to discuss the motion after it's made and seconded, although it's also acceptable to have input when the topic has been introduced. I just want to make that point. A little confused, which is easy to confuse me, but it indicates that we're doing away with overdue charges. And yet, on page two, the item, which is fifth down, I believe, is a dollar per day for overdue. I'm confused. Did we need to delete that?
It's on interlibrary and we can't delete. I don't believe we can delete that one.
Are we talking about interlibrary loans?
Yes.
Those are, those are materials that we borrow from other libraries, so we don't have the authority to forgive any late fees on them.
Okay, so we're deleting overdue charges only from materials from our own library.
That's correct.
And this is not a misgrant. That is because it's from another.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, we will move it to a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion moves seven to zero. Our next item would be consideration of ordinance number two-zero-one-eight-oh-four, amending Article eight-dash-one, Business Licenses of Chapter Eight Businesses of Cholo, Cholo City Code related to residential rentals and business license applications. Mr. Gaskus.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and representatives from Cholo High School. Welcome. At its October seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting, the city council approved ordinance number two thousand and seventeen-dash-zero-five, which added licensing requirements for short-term vacation rentals. As discussed at that time, the purpose of the licensing requirement was to create a mechanism to contact owners when a problem arose with rental activity and to be proactive in explaining the city's code on rental issues such as parking and noise. The city of Sedona passed an ordinance similar to Cholo's about the same time. Recently, a complaint was lodged against Sedona under Senate Bill fourteen-eighty-seven, the statute that penalizes cities and towns for violating state law. After review, the Attorney General released an opinion regarding short-term vacation rental licensing requirements regulated in Sedona's city code. The opinion concluded that Sedona's regulation requiring a business license for residential rentals violates state law. As discussed in the recent council retreat, Arizona revised statutes nine-dash-thirteen-oh-four prohibits municipalities from imposing a residential licensing requirement for residential rental properties or property owners. Based on the aforementioned Attorney General opinion regarding Sedona's city code to license residential rentals and the state statute, staff is recommending that city code section eight-dash-one-dash-one entitled definitions be amended to delete the licensing requirements for residential rentals. Also, as discussed at the retreat, staff advised that performing a non-criminal warrant check on business license applicants is not allowed under agreement with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, also known as DPS. An alternative to a warrant check is a background check, which can be done instead through an open-source system not affiliated with DPS. One benefit of a background check is that it may uncover information not found through a warrant check. Cholo City Code section eight-dash-one-dash-six-C-three entitled Application Issuance of Business License currently states that upon receiving a completed business license application, the department will submit a copy of the application to the Cholo Police Department to check for outstanding warrants on the applicant or applicants. Staff is recommending that section eight-dash-one-dash-six-C-three be amended to change the warrant check requirement to a background check. In the ordinance, additions are bolded and underlined and deletions are struck through, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah, my Walters will make the motion. Or after it's read, will make the motion on this particular item.
Okay.
Is there a charge for the background check?
There is no additional charge. It is covered under the business license application fee, which is twenty-five dollars.
Let's want to make a comment that this is really sad that this is, you know, I look at as an overreach from the state being able to take local control away from cities and towns. I think it's something that was good that we had implemented and it's really the only way that we are able to find out if people are using these homes as a somewhat of a business and it will also hinder what we can do with sober living homes in the future. So I thought what we had, you know, followed there with Sedona was very helpful in being able to control some of these situations. And, you know, hopefully that will change, but I doubt that it will. But it is sad that we don't have that local control anymore.
Okay, any other questions?
Justin, that doesn't care us at all about enforcement issues, right? Like parking, we still have that.
That is correct. The original intent with requiring the licenses for the residential rentals was to allow staff to be proactive in informing property owners, whether it's a long-term or a short-term rental, that there are existing city codes that apply to all residential properties, not just rental properties. Things such as noise, such as parking where you may be blocking the street, trash removal, those types of things. This will not change those codes. They are still in effect. What it changes is our ability to let people know what the requirements are up front rather than on the back end.
Quick follow-up. So if there isn't a violation, we can only contact the people in the home though, no matter who they are, correct?
Under city code, there's multiple ways. If somebody is complaining of a noise complaint in the middle of the night, they're probably going to receive a visit from one of our police officers who will obviously contact the individual that is at the home. However, we can also contact at a later time, follow up with the owner of the home and let them know what the requirements are and what needs to be done in the future for compliance there.
The only problem with that is, is we don't know. We have to go further to know if they're the homeowners or not. That's the bad part about that issue. Now we don't.
Any other question?
Yeah, I would just observe that we, this is a, we have no choice scenario. We put in place what the city thought was advantageous and would help. And it has been ruled that it's in conflict with state law. And it's just a really, what we maybe call a no-brainer. We're going to fix it so it is not in conflict with state law. And so that's what we're doing right now if it's confusing to you.
Well, it wasn't an issue until fourteen-eighty-seven was passed last year, which then the state can find us and hold our state shared revenues. So up until that time, we could make laws for our own community that were different than what the state had. But now because of the passing of fourteen-eighty-seven, we stand to lose potentially our state shared revenues if we don't comply. So that's the other loss for cities and towns.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we will look for a motion. Emma?
For Councilmember Crittenen, I move to adopt ordinance number two-zero-one-eight-dash-zero-four.
Need to back up here just a minute. By unanimous consent, we need to read ordinance number two-zero-one-eight-dash-oh-five by title only since all council members have a copy. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. In ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Cholo, Arizona, amending Article eight-one, Business Licenses of Chapter Eight Business of the Cholo City Code related to residential rentals and business license application.
Thank you.
Okay, Emma, if you could restate your motion.
For Councilmember Crittenen, I move to adopt ordinance number two-zero-one-eight-dash-zero-four.
Okay, is there a second?
For Councilmember Leach, oh, I am seconding the motion.
All right.
Sorry, didn't mean to wake you.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just got a quick comment. I just wish the big city government wasn't running our small town. It'd been nice to go, you know, population of fourteen thousand and under so we can control it. In a big city, they have no options, so they couldn't control anything like that. But it's just sad that a small town, we can't control that, and I just hate to see that. I want to keep the money, so I'm a little greedy.
Okay, any other discussion? We will move it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes seven to zero. Our next item is consideration of ordinance, did I say that one? Yeah. Two zero eight, or two zero one eight zero six, approving the agreement for sale of real. Oh, okay, my head. Consideration of ordinance number two zero one eight oh five, amending section three dash one dash one, city manager of Article three dash one, appointed officers of chapter three administration of Cholo City Code. Justin John.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and students. Was that difficult to read, Connor? Some of this stuff can get difficult to read. So keep that in mind when I'm working my way through this. Subsection three dash one dash one E of the Cholo City Code prescribes the powers and duties of the city manager and specifically addresses purchasing powers in subsection nine. Currently, city code requires any purchase over fifty thousand dollars be published once a week for two consecutive weeks in a local newspaper. Many times, there are sufficient local bids to obtain competitive bids without publication, which is an added cost and also may cause delays in getting projects completed. The proposed ordinance number two zero one eight dash zero five would amend subsection three dash one dash one E subsection nine I. By adding the sentence, publication may not be required if there are sufficient local vendors, three, to obtain competitive bids. City staff will continue to ensure that competitive bidding requirements are followed, including requesting sealed bids. As in the past, council approval will be required for all purchases over fifty thousand. In addition, purchase requests may still be published if staff feels it is in the best interest of the city. City staff recommends adopting ordinance number two zero one eight dash zero five, which would amend section three dash one dash one, city manager of Article three dash one, appointed officers of chapter three administration of the Cholo City Code to address publication requirements for purchases over fifty thousand. The proposed change is shown in the ordinance as bolded and underlined. Staff's available for questions.
Okay, are there any questions? That's most.
Yeah, I understand what we're trying to do, and I understand. First thing I want to say is, I totally have confidence in my city manager and staff and everything else. I just look at this is, I still think we need to keep it the same way. I like to have us being transparent as we can when we're purchasing stuff. By putting it out there and letting people see what we're spending fifty thousand dollars on. There's a lot of people in Navajo County that don't even make fifty thousand dollars. And I like to see it purchased out there, so people can understand what we're purchasing and the amount, and have it recorded out there. If we try not to do that, then people might take the opposite direction of thinking that we're doing something behind the back. We earn the trust of the people when we have, when we hit Home Rule. We also earn the trust from people when we did permanent base. And I think this is just a part of that, where we can, where people can see where we're spending our money on and see it's out there, instead of thinking that we're doing something behind doors, which we're not, and we're not saying that we are. But I just like seeing it out there, where we still have the same thing going on, where people can see what's going on. That's just my opinion.
I can appreciate that. And I can also appreciate the fact that as we go forward with this, or look at it, to be able to move things in a more timely manner, we're still bringing anything over fifty thousand to council for approval. Just like tonight, we'll be able to see all of those bids. We'll be able to know if something, we still ultimately approve anything over fifty thousand. Anything under fifty thousand, the city manager has the authority to pass. And so it's still a matter of three people bidding on it. It's just a matter of whether or not we have to continue to publicize it is the main issue here. And I think for what we give up in time, what we would gain in some cases is good, but it's, you know, I can see both sides of it as well. But I really feel that, I don't know that this is a hindrance, and I don't feel that we are not disclosing and being transparent, you know, still in with this measure. That's Member Leach.
It also, he could still bring it to the council. I mean, it's just saying he doesn't have to, but he.
He has to bring it to the council over fifty thousand.
No, I'm just saying if it's fifty thousand and under, he has the right to say, well, I don't want to make that decision. I can still bring it to the council, correct?
Correct.
And as far as transparency, it's still public record that we're spending that money. If anybody could go look, doesn't matter if we're spending twenty dollars, five dollars, or fifty thousand, it's still, it's still public knowledge to go look at what we're spending it on. So as far as transparency, I don't see how that's hiding it. I like the idea of moving it quicker, but I like the idea, too, that he has the right to like, I don't want to make that decision. Could be somebody thinking it's a friend of a friend of a friend, so I'm going to take that to the council. So as long as that's still there, I like the idea.
From staff's perspective, we don't feel like we're losing any transparency, because like you said, Councilman Leach, it still has to come to the council. And then the council, in effect, maintains the same control that you have today.
Okay.
City manager has a comment.
May I observe, city manager has a comment?
I just want to clarify, even if it's under fifty thousand, city manager doesn't have the authority to approve it unless the council's already approved it in a budget. So the council's going to approve everything still. It's just, it's just the publication requirement is all we're really talking about tonight. And perhaps Mr. Brown can explain, this is even way more restrictive than what the state law is.
So, under state law, under Title thirty-four, that governs public works projects, they have certain limits before you have to publicize. And it's based on a CPI, so it goes up every year. But public works projects, for example, this year under state law, would have to be over two hundred and eleven thousand before you'd even have to publicize it for bid. Recreational projects, I believe, is about a hundred and eighty, and then buildings are like at nineteen thousand. So I guess the city statute, the code right now is saying fifty thousand, and what we're just saying is, we would like the leeway, kind of like the state code, to not have to publicize if we feel like we got sufficient bidders here locally and don't have to go through that process.
Yeah, I want to observe that, I understand councilman's all sorts position, and I got some of that in me. I wanted to clarify and make sure I understood. Anytime there would be fewer than three bids, it would automatically go for the publication. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, if it's over fifty thousand dollars.
Right, right, no. That, what we're talking about amending says, in good faith, we're expecting, we're going to have three or more competitive bids, and if not, it's going to go back to the advertisement.
Let me clarify, typically you would have three or more bids. What the ordinance says is, there are sufficient local vendors to provide three bids. We can try, sometimes we try all we want to get three bids. We may send out a package to ten contractors, but we may only get two bids back. There have to be sufficient number, for most of the time, if there's less than three, we would go ahead and publicize it. For instance, the projects we approved tonight, the council approved tonight, those were both, the one was two hundred and forty-three thousand. It would have to go, be publicized anyway. We're just talking about those between fifty and two hundred and eleven on public works projects.
And then, we're relying on staff, which I have faith in now, to evaluate that bid and look at it and say, you know what? I think if we publicize this, we're going to get a better bid. And so that's what we're going to do. But the staff would have the right to move forward with this project, whatever that project would be, under the definition of this amendment. But in no case would it ever exceed the state required advertisement code. This, this passing this action doesn't take us up and beyond the state requirement. Am I correct? Tell me I am or.
Let me address that. So the state code that I was mentioning was in Title thirty-four, and it's on public works projects, whether they be for sewer lines, buildings, building a park. The state does not address things like purchasing a car or purchasing computers or software equipment. The state leaves that to each individual city or town to determine how far they want to go. So when I talk about state statutes, I'm talking about public works projects, buildings, parks. I was just comparing that to say, right now, we're more stricter than even what the state is on those issues. Now, having said that, we still have to follow Title thirty-four. That's here. You see what I'm saying? There's other things we buy that may be over fifty thousand that don't fall under Title thirty-four.
And one other thing to mention is if the council, we ever brought a project or a purchase back to the council over fifty thousand dollars, and the council didn't think we had appropriate bids, they could reject the bids at that point in time and require us to publicize or to go out after new bids. The council's done that before. We've had to reject bids before when they've been over budget in cases. And the council always has the authority to approve or disapprove anything we bring before the council.
Making it tough.
Councilmember Kukavas. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we will look for a motion.
For Councilmember Kakavas, I move to adopt, wait, is it E or F?
Excuse us, we need to read, by unanimous consent, we need to read ordinance by title only since all members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, amending section three one one E nine of Article three one, appointed officers of chapter three administration of the Cholo City Code.
Okay. For a main motion, okay, a motion, we need a motion?
For Councilmember Kakavas, I move to adopt ordinance number two zero one eight dash oh five.
Is there a second?
I am seconding the motion for Councilmember Crittenden.
Okay, is there any discussion? We will move it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So it passes five to two. Our next item will be consideration of ordinance number two zero one eight zero six, approving the agreement for sale and real property to purchase property from Apache Investments LLC and approving associated budget transfers. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor and council and students. On July fourteenth, two thousand and five, the city of Cholo received in a property exchange property that's known as the Butler Meadow for Navajo County Accessors Parcels, two ten eighteen seventeen A and two ten eighteen twenty-three. The city has been exploring options on the use of the property, including adding bike trails, another golf course, and other recreational amenities. Recently, Greg Butler approached the city and asked if the city would be interested in purchasing the property known as AP two ten eighteen zero fifteen A, which is approximately one point seven five acres and which sits on a, and which sits a four thousand square foot building. I think it's shown on the map in front of you there. The purchased property is adjacent to the aforementioned city-owned property and as shown on the property map. City staff did due diligence and obtained an opinion of value of the property of approximately three hundred thousand. City staff met with Mr. Butler and negotiated a price of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred for the property. Terms of payment are a hundred thousand dollars due before close of escrow on November thirtieth, twenty eighteen, with remaining a hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred due honor before August first of twenty nineteen. The first payment of a hundred thousand would come from the council contingency budget and the remaining a hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred, for which the city would sign a promissory note, would be allocated in the fiscal year twenty twenty budget cycle. City staff recommends approving ordinance number two, twenty eighteen oh six, and purchasing the property, which would allow the city to explore options to develop the meadow for further recreational opportunities for its residents, but also allow for parking for these activities and would allow the city to either rent the property for additional income or use the building for maybe another city department. I'm available for any question.
Just want to notify all the council members that we do have on the agenda here tonight. If there's any need to move into executive session on this item, it is available.
Mayor, sorry, I had one correction in the agreement. Under paragraph fifteen of the agreement, it states the word, the contract was drafted by the seller. It's actually should read, it was drafted by the buyer, which is the city. So I need to make that correction in the agreement.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I'm just going to state that I really feel this would be an asset to the community as we look at developing in the future here, this site. It will just lend itself for more options and not hinder things that we could do with that site since we already own about, what, fourteen or fifteen acres in that area there. So I think it'll be a great asset for the community in the future.
Great, any other discussion? No, is there a motion?
For Vice Mayor.
By, oh, by unanimous consent, read ordinance number two zero one eight dash zero six by title only since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of real property known as AP number two ten eighteen fifteen A from Apache Investments LLC.
Thank you. Emma, is there a motion?
For Vice Mayor Hatch, I move to adopt ordinance number two zero one eight oh six and further move to approve the agreement for sale of real property with Apache Investments LLC and approve the associated budget transfers.
Okay, is there a second?
I would like to second the motion for Councilman Michael Stubb.
Okay, is there any more discussion? No? Okay, it'll move to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and it passes seven to zero. So our next item is the summary of current events. Are council members ready for that?
We're going to have kids do theirs first?
Either way, council members, what it'd be like.
Hey, I would like to point out that tomorrow morning, and Mr. Mutter can give me the time. What is it, breakfast?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock tomorrow morning at Saltara, that Chamber of Commerce is having their monthly breakfast for all members of the Chamber of Commerce. It's a great way to go interface, promote your business and everything. And I would highly recommend that all people that are members of the Chamber of Commerce go to the breakfast tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at Saltara. Okay?
Thank you. That's Member Also.
Thank you. I had a pleasure of being in a meeting for Meals on Wheels in the senior center this week, and just to let everybody know, there's going to be a Thanksgiving dinner at the senior center, November eleventh, from eleven, twelve, and one. There's going to be three seedings. You can call and set up for any seating that you would want to. It's free to the public. You can call nine two eight five three two zero six five six. And hopefully you enjoy a nice turkey dinner and a lot of fun. Usually, council people are serving and cleaning up and family members. So we're having a good time out there, serving people in the city of Cholo. Also, there's a drawing going to be happening at the same time.
Would you clarify the date on that, please?
November twentieth. Excuse me, I'm sorry. November twentieth.
Thank you.
At eleven, twelve, and one. Phone number again, nine two eight five three two zero six five six. Also, there's going to be a drawing at one thirty for a freezer. They've been oxygen, putting tickets together for a raffle for a freezer, a big freezer. Tickets are being sold at the senior center, Horn Chevrolet, and also at the Cholo Chamber, if you'd like to buy tickets for that. Also, they're getting ready for their Christmas craft fair, November sixteenth and seventeenth. Get that one right. And if you'd like to come to that, that's nine to two o'clock, and there's going to have bake sale, and they'll have all kinds of stuff up there for sale at the senior center. So please support them, anything you can do. If you would like to be helped with. If you would like to be help with the Senior Center Meals on Wheels and deliver food to the people in and around Sholo, please contact them and they'll make sure that you can give them a hand somewhere. We ask, thank you.
Money from the raffle benefits.
The raffle benefit goes for more food and stuff for the people for other Christmas stuff going on.
Thank you. Any other council members? Give a brief report here. Our Sixth Annual Community Fast begins this Sunday, November 11th and ends Saturday, November 17th. We encourage citizens to fast one or two meals and donate the cost of those meals to help your fellow citizens in need this holiday season. Donations are accepted at City Hall, National Bank, Chase, Washington Federal, and Arizona Central Credit Union. Also, there's a community celebration on Sunday, November the 18th at 6:00 PM at the Sholo Auditorium. The library is selling calendars. If anybody would like to purchase a city calendar for 2019, they're on sale at the library for a fundraiser. Each month features employees from the library, Sholo Police Department, Timber Mesa Fire, and Medical District with themes such as defenders of literacy or cybersecurity. It is a serious business. You can call 532-4070 for information on how to get your own copy or you can buy them as a unique Christmas gift. And the costs of these are $15. So, I encourage you to support the library and their venture here. And we just want to thank our citizens, those who got out and exercised the right to vote today. And we're grateful for the opportunity of which we live in a country which allows that. Is there any members of the council that have anything they want to share or current events at the high school?
Um, I can go. So, we just finished up our fall sports, except for cross-country. We have one cross-country runner that is going to state this weekend. Bo Williams, I don't think he's here right now. But if you see him, make sure to wish him luck. All of our fall sports teams, including Cheer, have qualified for state. And so, we haven't done that in a couple of years. So, that's pretty amazing. We are just about to start up basketball and wrestling. Well, they did just start. Also, we are currently, as student council, we're currently planning winter formal, which is on December 15th. And with that, we are also doing a homeroom toy drive competition. And there's like a little prize to that too. But we're going to team up with the fire department to get those toys out to the kids that need it. More good news, our high school was a C rating and it just went up to a B ranking rating. So, that's good.
That is good, that's good. From the Times, City Manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to report on Veterans Day, which is this Sunday, November 11th. The VFW will hold a ceremony at 11:00 AM at the Veterans Memorial at City Hall, 180 Norton 9th Street, across the street from these council chambers. The event is open to the public. One of the freedoms our armed forces have fought for is our right to vote and we thank all those who took the time to vote today in the election. The Sholo Aquatic Center is offering free lap or open swimming next Monday, November 12th, to all veterans who present a military ID. And if you want more information on that with the aquatic center, you can call 532-4130. International Games Week began yesterday at the library. As was mentioned earlier, the library is providing a lot of events and programs for the community. Anyways, International Games Week has gaming events for children and adults. Tomorrow is junior games for ages two to six from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Thursday features a group and party games for 8 to 18, from 4:00 to 5:00. And Friday is game zone for ages eight and older with a Super Smash Bros. tournament from 1:30 to 4:00 PM. On Friday, November 16th, the library will be hosting an escape room for hitting teens 12 to 18 years old against adults from 6:15 to 8:00. It's called Unleash the Monster to celebrate the 200th anniversary of the novel Frankenstein. More information on library programs, you can contact 532-4070. Tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, entrepreneurs can hear ABC's Shark Tank winner, Kirsten Hathcock of Mod Mom Furniture, talk about her experiences on Shark Tank at a mixer in the Symposium Room at Northern Pioneer College, 1001 West Dusa Clubs. The event kicks off a series of free workshops that end in a region-wide Shark Tank-inspired Pioneer Pitch event in May of 2019. The workshops will address how to build a business model, secure funding, and attract clients. Sholo's Main Streets Annual Santa and the Shops on Gingerbread Lane kicks off this Friday, November 9th, from noon to 6:00 PM and Saturday, November 10th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the City Campus Gym at 620 East McNeil. The Aquatic Center is holding a free swim night on Monday, November 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and will be closed for two weeks for annual maintenance, beginning Thursday, November 22nd. The Recreation Department is hosting a kids' night out for $10 per child ages 5 through 12 on Friday, November 16th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Teen Center at 620 East McNeil. And in public works projects, the sidewalk and concrete on 8th Street is close to being done this week. And this, they'll move to the repair on the street and then complete the work on McNeil after that. The sewer replacement project continues in Sierra Vista and Westwood subdivision and Thornton Avenue are being milled and overlaid. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, our next item is scheduling a meeting.
One topic that was discussed at our recent council retreat was changes to the city code regarding water and the sewer, water, and land division sections of the code. We're wondering, it was mentioned at the retreat that we need to follow up with a study session on that item.